We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, call to order this meeting of the Mon Gay County Commission for October 28th, 2020. All Commissioners present, begin with consent and approval. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning. We have nine exonerations for $3,290.90. One request to create a new statement for $2.48. Vouchers: General County Fund, $95,000, 98373. Call Severance, $16892. 911, $96. Chestnut Ridge Park, $12,890.38. Mason Dixon Park, $10982. Recreation Levy, $3,087.15. Assessment Evaluation, $12742. Payroll, $929,742.70. Teen Court, $8,00547.50. Purchasing Card Vouchers: General County Fund, $21,896.26. 911, $15707. Home Confinement, $4,052.98. Chestnut Ridge Park, $35.98. Mason Dixon Park, $44.35. Assessment Evaluation, $95.45. For a voucher total of $1,077,535.71. Position Vacancies for Boards and Authorities: The Western Board of Zoning Appeals, Monty Gay County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Camp Muffley Advisory Board, Abandoned and Dilapidated Enforcement Agency, Mason Dixon Park Advisory Board, Region Six Planning and Development Council, Historic Landmarks Commission, and the Mountaineer Trail Network Authority. Fiduciary Orders for October 28th, 2020.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Introductions of new employees and personnel changes. Jim? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Jimmy.
I'm here this morning to ask for approval for Lucas Cubic. He'll be starting on November 1st as probationary telecommunicator at 16:30 an hour. I believe we are... Lucas is currently a county employee with the Home Confinement Office, and we're kind of stealing him from the Sheriff's Office.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Tell him welcome, please. Are there any other introductions? Hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the public. We're now open for comments from the public. If you wish to speak, please come forward. Identify yourself and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Ted Hastings from 87 Kingwood Pike. I'm here on behalf of Conscious Harvest Cooperative. We're a 501(c)(3) organization, nonprofit, operates here in Morgantown, Mon County area. And I'm here because I'm the... One of the founding members on the board. And the environmental assessment of the Green Bag Road project states that the impact to our garden, which is a nonprofit organization, has been minimized. And I believe this statement misrepresents the scope of the project. Our community garden is almost entirely within the boundaries of disturbance. Conscious Harvest has poured over $9,000 last year into the local food economy and supplied over 2,000 pounds of produce from local farmers to qualifying families. This program, the Farms of Food Program, would definitely be in jeopardy if this project moves forward as promised and supported by this board. And it's important to understand, and the community to understand, that the loss of this nonprofit, like losing our 501(c)(3) designation even because of the loss of our garden, because it's very important that the backbone of our garden is our community gardeners. And, you know, this program is, in my opinion, very important. And it's important to understand that because there was no farming going on there alleged in the EA, that our rights as an organization have been violated. The National Environmental Protection Act, we were not afforded certain rights under that because we are doing agriculture, which is, in reference to the LISA, land evaluation and site assessment. We will be moving for remedy on this. You're costing us... Basically, not you all, but the whole body of governance of the MMMPO down to this, to the local level, has inadequately protected our rights as an organization, which we've written out and reached out to numerous people. This is now going to manifest itself as probably a federal challenge in court. And it's going to be very costly to our organization. And this is what happens whenever public planning does not meet with the commerce. And now, this is the kind of undue, unneeded stress to our organization that is going to have to happen. And that's very sad. I want to at least notify you all of possibly, you know, if things keep going, the notice to a federal challenge. And yes, we are going to be doing fundraising for that. It's very costly. If anybody's listening in the public wants to reach out and help, it'd be great. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else choosing to speak?
Good morning. My name is Mary Hastings, 87 Kingwood Pike. I'm here to represent my business, Joy and Hemp, and also represent the cultural resources of Mon County. Today is the last day to... Today and tomorrow are the last days to public comment on the Green Bag Road Improvement Project. That's why I'm here. That's why I've been here for four weeks running. And I was here last year to speak about this important project. And I'm excited about the opportunities to grow in Morgantown. I started my business in Morgantown, and I want to continue doing business in Morgantown. So I would like to focus on the federal law, on the process we're involved in, which is the purpose of what we're doing now, which is to consider alternatives, discuss impacts, and involve the community. So I know that there are a lot of options being presented. And we've talked about the 18 different arrangements of what's happened. And I'm very sensitive to Mr. Socora's points about time and money. And that's why I'm here, to speak about these options. So there has been an alternative presented, which is Option G on the table, to improve the level of service. This is a combination of what has already been presented, a little bit tweaked, to not have impact on residences or businesses. So I would like anyone with ears to hear, eyes to see, to know that alternatives are still being presented, and people are still speaking out. Community resources are still being protected. We are not going away. We can't just stomp on businesses, farms, nonprofits, and say it's in the good interest of our community. I don't see how that's really possible. So I would like to ask for anyone listening to comment, use your voice. This is a right, this is federal law. We want to be involved. We want to help. Want to make progress. I want to see good things happen in that area. I'm very committed to that area. So thank you for your time, and I'm looking forward to healthy alternatives for 2020.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, or good morning. My name's Doogie Hastings. I'm a resident of Mon County. I'm a landowner, and this activity you've been talking about, this roundabout and the Green Bag Road in Kingwood Pike, that's been our family farm continuously since 1904. There's been some rumors passed around by my children, or stated by my children, that they don't want to look at alternatives as to a turning lane. Because the only reason we want a turning lane is so we may put a Sheetz in, which is Balderdash. Ten years ago, or perhaps you'll remember the year 2012, we negotiated with that company, had over a million-dollar offer to lease and/or buy our land. And I rejected that so my children could continue to farm there. At one point, the city came and gerrymandered that land in. I sat before Judge Stone with my father. And why in turn? He asked my father why I didn't want that land in the city. And he said, "I wished my children, or my grandchildren, to farm there." Now, 20 years ago, I thought that was Balderdash myself, but look, they are farming there. And for you to reject the idea of a turning lane because of some rumors from people that have known to play favoritism is wrong. There is no offer with Sheets. That was a decade ago. You're behind times. You don't understand the value of that land is significant. So I want to swelch that right now. The reason is not because I want to put a Sheets in. It's because it's a $10 million project where a stop sign worked perfectly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name's Patrick Kyle, 87 Kingwood Pike. I'm just wondering why there's such a disregard for what the people have to say. You, Mr. Bloom, posted on Facebook the other day in favor of the roundabout. On that post, you got 92 comments. Of those comments, 28 of them were original. Now, four of those comments were for the roundabout. 24 of those comments against the roundabout, with numerous comments after that against the roundabout. Take the Kingwood Pike Road Report. It's another Facebook group that consists of people who actually live on the Kingwood Pike. 92 comments on there, over 60 of them original, one of them for the roundabout. That's nearly 60 comments against the roundabout that you're not looking at. Even on your own Facebook post, you refuse to look at what the people have to say. So I'd like to ask, if you don't want to do what the people want you to do, if you don't want to represent the people who elected you, then don't vote on anything. If you're not going to listen to what the people have to say, then why are you in office? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close comments from the public. Thank you all. Becca Fett Clark. Welcome.
Hey, Commissioners. How are you?
We're fine.
Always love to come and see you and talk about what 4H is doing and how things are going with us. So, as you know, my name is Becca Fett Clark. I'm the 4H Extension Agent. I've been here for about 13 years, and I always say that I have the best job in the world. So thank you for your support. I'm a couple weeks late on National 4H Week. Usually, I try to come that week, but we were just so busy with our programs and activities that it was hard to squeeze it in. So we're here now, and we provided you with a report as well as a little 4H token of our appreciation. So first and foremost, I have quite a few things that I want to talk about. First and foremost, I would be remiss to not mention our new office building. So we will celebrate about a year in November. We moved last November, and we love it. We love our home in Mylan Park. We appreciate all the wonderful storage space we have, right? So that we can keep all of our programming materials in one place and be available more readily to the public. So thank you so much for your support in providing that space for us. We love it. The second thing is, I have some exciting news since last we saw each other. We did hire a new 4H Program Assistant. So this is Heather Tanton. I'd like to introduce you to her. Some of you are probably familiar with her. She has been around in the 4H Program for years. But I'll let her introduce herself, tell you about a couple projects we have going on, as well as her background, and then you'll hear from me again. So Heather?
Good morning. I'm really excited to be here. I'm Heather Tanton. I've been in public service for 20 years almost. I've done... I was a... I am a social worker. That's my background. So I always am about serving people and helping in the community. So 4H was a natural career step for me. So I also had nine years in the public library system. So I bring lots of fun resources and lots of background in helping kids and families. So I would love to tell you a little bit about a couple of things that we've done just in the last couple of months. We were able to get a grant through Volunteer West Virginia and be able to provide a scavenger hunt here in Mon County. And we were able to even utilize spots in Camp Muffley and Mason Dixon Park and Chestnut Ridge. So we tried to spread those clues out all over so that everyone in the county would have a close one nearby. And so the kids were able to do a kindness activity at each stop, and then they were able to have a cute prize for participating. And then one other thing that we've started just recently is doing these activity paths. And so we've got two on the ground, one at Cheat Lake Elementary and one at Mylan Park Elementary. And we are in talks with lots of the other area schools and some of the other public areas to be able to put some more activity paths on the ground. So those paths encourage fitness and getting kids to move and utilizing spaces in schools and other areas that maybe aren't used because they're just plain old concrete spots. So we're pretty excited about those projects, and I'll let Becca tell you about a few other things we have.
So, you know, with the pandemic, with COVID-19, things definitely changed over the summer for 4H, but we kept on going and probably just as strong as we always have. So we had virtual camp, which was different. But thanks to your support on that, we were able to provide each camper with a really nice 4H bag full of super fun, hands-on activities. Also met virtually and did some activities that way. So camp was successful, although somewhat depressing for our 4H campers who couldn't go and spend the week at Camp Muffley. But we were able to provide some type of program to fit that need. We also continued Energy Express in a different way than we had been before. And it was very successful. We had 14 AmeriCorps members who met daily at the Extension Office to plan hands-on, fun activities. And kits were delivered through our summer feeding sites over the summer. So youth still participated in that program, and it was successful. We have pre and post-test scoring on that. They did a test through Scholastic, the program that Energy Express chose to use. So we were able to provide those two programs in a different way. You know, we're just continuing to keep on going. We have a virtual county-wide 4H club that meets. We had about 20 participants on that. And then we're also going to start next week our special interest clubs. So those will meet at the Extension Office. We'll be able to use that beautiful teaching kitchen that we have to teach kids how to bake and create healthy snacks. And so we're excited about that. WVU Extension has limited the number of youth that can participate in live activities. So we are limited to eight. And I will say, I'm really proud especially of this club we have coming up because we filled it in a day with eight middle-school-aged young people to participate. In December, we'll have a cloverbud holiday activity, sort of an event where they can do some community service activities and do some fun holiday things. So we're continuing on. It's a little bit different, but like I said, we have kept on rolling. And Heather has been a real blessing to the program. She comes in with really great ideas. I kind of was like, oh, my gosh, what are we going to do now? So it was really great to have someone new come in with wonderful ideas and just keep on truckin'. So we can answer any questions. Or, you know, like I said, I think the most important thing is that you know that we are still very active in the community. We're coming up with new things every day to do, keep the kids engaged, and we appreciate all your support.
Thank you.
You may have mentioned it, but tell me about your Marshmallow Catapult Kit?
Yes. So we did find that educational kits are working really well. People could stop over the summer and pick things up. And the Marshmallow Catapult Kit was popular. We provided those to the library to distribute, as well as at our local elementary schools. We put totes out, and families could come and stop and pick them up. So the Marshmallow Catapult Kit is popsicle sticks that are rubber-banded together with a spoon. And then you just launch the marshmallows, pom-poms in our case. But, you know, that was one thing that we tried to offer. And we were hoping in January to continue with our school programs. We're not able to go into the schools, aside from painting the activity paths. But we will provide teachers with kits that they can use with hands-on educational activities, just what we've always done. And we're going to meet with our community club leaders next week and decide next steps for them with clubs and meeting in person and things like that. So we're getting it done.
Good.
Thank you very much. You guys are very welcome.
Thank you.
I will say, I did actually just missed you last Friday, I believe. But I did get to skip on the activity path at Cheat Lake Elementary, where I participate as a read-aloud volunteer in the afternoon. So it was a cool path. Yeah, I did it. Okay?
We really wanted to do those paths because one of our partner programs is doing it in low-income schools, and we wanted to provide them to all the schools. So thankfully, the Mon County School System purchased us the stencils. As an agreement, we will go. We solicited the donations for the other supplies. I applied for a grant. So we were really fortunate that we're fortunate, I guess. I don't know. We both feel like we're going to die after we do those, but, you know.
It was quite extensive, I must say.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. If there's anything we ever can do, any service project or any way that we can assist, you know where to reach us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Colleen Poozey, do we have grants?
I have a grant application for the Records Management and Preservation Board Grant. This is on behalf of the County Clerk's Office. They're requesting $30,000 for a scanner for their off-site location. I'm going to also have a resolution of support.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Correspondents?
The only item that I received was an email regarding Mountain State Waste expands its services to include all of Monty Gay County. And I think Commissioner Blen wanted to speak to this.
I received an email from Mark Osborne from Mountain State Waste. They had been monitoring and watching what was going over in the Cheat Lake area. And there's been a lot of concerns of garbage pickup or lack of it, and a lot of concerns with residential and commercial services out there. So he wrote me a letter saying that they are planning to expand their services to the county, but especially in that area. They wanted us to be aware of it and to make it public. And I said that I would allow this to be put under correspondence.
Commissioners, any other correspondence?
Renetta, I just put three letters in the folder that we got from Bill Austin this morning. One was from the city in regards to the Green Bag Project, and it was a notice of that they were in agreement with the project. The other was from the Green Belt Committee, or Green Belt Connections Committee, which is a subcommittee of the city's Land Use and Preservation Agency. And it was noticed that they also approved the project.
Thank you. Any unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
We'll move on to new business. First, to consider for adoption... Do we have Tom Ammon on the...
I believe he's on the phone, yes.
Sorry. To consider for adoption, a resolution and order of the County Commission, which would approve the amendment and restatement of the County Commission's outstanding tax increment revenue and refunding bonds, Series 2017A, Morgantown Industrial Park Phase II Project, in order to increase the authorized principal amount thereof by $1,500,000 Extend the drawdown period for the principal amount of such bonds and related matters. And I'll ask Tom to go ahead and do his comment, please, if you would.
Comments?
Tom?
Is there a question? Is there a discussion?
This is not a discussion, no.
Not a discussion?
Is he there? Tom?
Is it on mute?
No. Mr. Ammon? No?
I'll move for adoption.
And then we get a discussion.
Mr. Adrian to come up?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
John Adrian, co-owner of Enron Properties, entity that owns the Morgantown Industrial Park. The resolution before you today is basically goes hand in hand with what we've been working with the Commission on in the West Virginia Department of Highways as it relates to the proposed Harmony Grove Interchange. The resolution before you is basically an increase in the current amount of dollars that we have available, basically allocated to pay for the innumerable amount of studies that have to be done, referred to as the NEPA, Environmental Studies, and the IJR, which includes the engineering, part of the engineering, and also the traffic studies that are required from the Federal Highway Administration. So that resolution that you have before you is for that purpose. It's entirely to pay for the engineering, the legal, and the studies necessary to do the studies, which has to be done before the state can consider actually constructing the interchange.
Okay.
I would move that we approve...
We've got a motion. Yeah, I moved to... I just don't have a second. Yeah.
Okay. Do we need to... I just wanted to verify whether we needed to adopt the resolution and an order?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. So Tom, could you mend your...
Sure. To adopt and the order.
Second? Been properly moved in second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, consideration to approve 2020 Annual Tax Increment Finance and Report as required by the West Virginia Development Office.
This is a report that Steptoe and Johnson prepared for the Commission. It is required by law that we submit this before October 31st each year. Every five years, you are supposed to have a public hearing regarding TIF projects. You met that requirement last year, so you don't need to do that again this year. So right now, we just need the Commission to approve the project and sign off on the... Or, I'm sorry, approve the report and sign off on it so I can send this to the Development, the State Development Office.
Move to approve report as presented?
Second.
Properly moved in second. All in favor? Aye. Next, to consider for approval, requisition number 39 for the University Town Center EODD Special District Excise Tax Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds, Series 2017 Administrative Expense Fund.
The requisition is for $3,556.25, and those funds will be paid to MuniCap for their services on the district.
Move to approve requisition 39 as presented?
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All in favor? Aye. And lastly, to consider moving the November 11th, 2020 County Commission meeting due to Veterans Day holiday. What day are you suggesting?
November the 13th. And I think we should keep the time at 10 o'clock.
So move to adjust the Commission's regular public meeting date by moving to Friday for the week of Veterans Day, by moving the meeting date from the 11th to the 13th at 10 o'clock.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. For this change, all in favor? Aye. Any reports from elected officials? Kelly?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Kelly.
On behalf of Sheriff Palmer, we have an additional property that will need to be suspended from our tax lien sale. So I just wanted to bring that to you. I think I gave you two, Tom.
Thank you.
And the one thing that we did do last year that we did not do when I was here a couple of weeks ago is I believe that you gave us permission, if any other emergency situations come up...
Correct.
That we would be able to go ahead and suspend those.
Correct. That's correct.
Change noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Any other reports from elected officials? Hearing none, we move to County Commissioners. Sean?
Since we met last Wednesday, on Thursday, we had a Board of Health meeting, which I'll talk about a little later, and a MMMPO meeting. Friday, we had staff reports. And then in the afternoon, I had a meeting with the Mon County Board of Education Superintendent and Board Member, Lytle. Saturday, I had a meeting with a Cheat Lake citizen regarding broadband struggles. I went out to Snake Hill Road and talked to an individual out there who I've been corresponding with for a couple of months regarding his issues with connectivity in the area. Today's a regular day. With the afternoon, we have our Board of Assessment Appeal meetings. Tomorrow, depending on how the Board of Assessment Appeal meetings go, I may participate in the city's Special Committee on Homeless, which I'm a member of that committee. It depends on how the Board of Assessment Appeal meetings go. Friday, I have staff reports. We have a meeting with the Development Authority. I have a meeting with the Monty Gay County Broadband Initiative. And then Friday night is Mohawk Bowl, believe it or not. So luckily, my daughter plays in the band, and it's a home game, so I'll be able to go watch the game. In general, I'd like to thank the Board of Health. I know they've been in the paper a lot lately regarding the medical cannabis issue. And I appreciate their stand. And ultimately, the same thing, they want the same thing we all want, is to ensure the safety of the citizens of this county. So I appreciate them, one, processing the application and moving that on, and their efforts to instill some sort of regulations that will help... efforts to instill some sort of regulations that will help manage these entities. An interesting fact, as I was looking into some of this information, two years ago, the State of Pennsylvania instituted medical cannabis, and to date, over two years, they've grown to have 75 dispensaries for their entire state. So their population is 12.8 million. So that's about one dispensary for every 171,000 people. In West Virginia, they're planning on day one, opening 100 medical dispensaries, and our population is 1.8. So approximately one dispensary for every 18,000 citizens. So those are things that, how's the state going to be able to manage that? And I think it's legitimate that people ask those questions. And I also want to ask our representatives to Charleston, whoever those representatives will be, to work with the Board of Health rather than work against them, to make those changes at the state level. Because that's the big question here, is what the Board of Health does, will it conflict with state statute? Well, I expect the Board of Health to take a two-pronged approach and try to come up with something that they'd like to instill here, and then work with our representatives in Charleston to try to make those changes. And I believe only one, Evan Hansen was the only one that actually had come out and said, oh, you know, he'll carry that to Charleston. I've asked Joe Statler, and Joe said certainly it's something that he would work on if he's elected. So I would challenge anybody as you're out voting, ask these representatives if they're going to fight for these changes in Charleston. Because I do appreciate the Board of Health taking a stance to try to make sure that the safety of our citizens is of utmost importance to how these entities are going to operate in our community. And in the spirit of, with the elections and everything that's going on, I think the Mohawk Bowl being this weekend is perfect. Because it allows, you know, even though it's part for everybody else that's watching and listening on the radio, it allows everybody to kind of get back to some sense of normalcy. That's what we've been trying to get for a long time. I know the national election is getting pretty bad. There are certain people that I can't even talk to anymore because they're just, you know, everybody is so polarized. And it's sad that we got, that it's like this, but I'm really, I think the Mohawk Bowl would help heal at least part of Mon County for that regard. We can't do much about the national level, but that's all I have to say.
Tom?
Okay. I agree with Sean. I do appreciate the Board of Health moving forward on the 20 dispensaries. I also want to thank Kelly Palmer and Sheriff Palmer, who noticed that a couple hotels were not paying their hotel motel tax, and they were on it right away, so I appreciate that. I also agree that we need, no matter what side you're on, to vote. That's the way to make your voice heard. And just to respond, I understand your concern, Kyle, about listening to the public. What we need to understand, when we keep talking about this $15 million, it's not just for the roundabout. It's for the expanding the road, widening the road, and moving an alternative route around the city of Morgantown. And the public made it very clear that when they voted for the roads for progress, that 72% of them made it very clear that they wanted us to come up with some different alternative. And that's what this is. We fix the interchange in Saverton, we will fix the Green Bag Road, and then we will fix the S-turn, which will happen. So we are moving forward on that alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. I will be brief. I do have a Zoom meeting of the Lodging Tax Force of our CBB, and that's on Monday. And as both Commissioners noted, Tuesday is Election Day. Please take the time to make sure your voice is heard. I agree, Sean. I do want that normalcy as you look down and you count down the days until we have the election. So thank you all.
Move to adjourn. Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.